All right, let's go ahead and get started. We'd like to welcome everyone that's here in the chamber, especially you scouts. You're looking forward to a riveting, fun night. So buckle up, you know, and tell them you don't have to stay here the whole time. Your leaders should know that, so. And everybody else is out there watching, so I've asked Tyler Jacobson to start us off with a prayer.
Our dear kind Father in Heaven, we are very grateful to be gathered here tonight to discuss the needs of the people that live here in Spanish Fork and that will visit Spanish Fork, and we ask you to please bless that thou will guide and direct the mayor and council in their decisions, and that thou please bless that thou will help us to see clearly the direction that thou would have the city go, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you. I've asked Councilman Mendenhall if he could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise and repeat the pledge after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Public comments, anyone that'd like to come and address the mayor and the council? Other than, if you're here for our public hearings, we'll hold it till then, but any other items, you're free to come up and say a few words. Don't be shy. If not, then we'll go to council comments, and let's start with Councilmember Beck.
I do not have anything tonight.
Oh, wow, thank you. Councilman Scobes.
Mayor, I have nothing to report at this time.
Oh, you sound so professional.
We're on a roll. Councilman Mendenhall.
Just Rotary Meeting today was fantastic, sorry. I thought you were going three for three, but not with me. Rotary Meeting was great, appreciated. Scott from the city coming down and speaking to us about the library and other updates of the city to the Rotary Club. Appreciate all that the Rotary Club does. Dr. Franzen's wife, now embarrassed that I forgot her name, what's her name?
Mary?
Pat. Pat Franzen, yep, is doing a, involved in a great global grant with our Rotary Club that will provide some services to West Africa, and so she's been in touch with the Rotary Club International over in that area and the clubs around here. Really excited to see that come to fruition. It's a good cause and awesome to be involved in that as Rotarians. The League of Cities and Towns had our annual conference last week. Just thank again everybody from the city for coming up and partaking of that, a good time to connect with other leaders and talk about what they're doing in our city. And then again, I'm always impressed by those cities that ask us what Spanish Fork is doing and take some good notes from the good things we do, and we learn a lot as well, so that was a good conference to attend. That's all I have, Mayor.
Just on a note with the Utah League of Cities and Towns, Mike is now the official president of the league for this year, so it's a great honor, and we're excited to have Mike in that, he'll do a fantastic job. He's been the vice president this past year, and so we might get heard, won't we, up there? There you go. Yeah, there we go. So just kudos to Mike for being involved in that and everything else he is. All right, Councilman Gordon.
Thank you, Mayor. The League of Cities and Towns was a good conference last week, learned a lot, and one of the, probably one of the better sessions that I attended was one that was given by Councilwoman Mendenhall from Salt Lake City who gave us a handout on our own, very own Spanish Fork City and on open space and parks, and by 2050, the population of Spanish Fork is supposed to go from the current 43,000 to 92,000, and just the plans and the preparation that we'll have in place to make sure that we have enough open space for our people in town, parks and things like that is very important, and just good to rub shoulders with all of the other representatives from around the state, the other 250 cities and towns that are represented up there and what they are doing. So just wanted to say that was time well spent, Mayor. As far as the chamber goes, we excuse Heather Yowd, our director, this evening, and she asked me to touch on tomorrow is our new networking lunch for our business community. It's going to be at Canyon View Park for anybody that'd like to attend from the business community, and also if anyone in the business community or chamber members would like to run for our board, that is, they'll be having a meeting October 30th for that. And then also a plug to continue to support the farmers market. It continues to just be packed every Saturday down here between 8:00 a.m. and 1:00. It's a great, great thing that the chamber puts on. Then the last thing I wanted to mention, Mayor, was we lost one of our sweet residents of Spanish Fork on the 6th of this month, little four-year-old Brookie, Brookie Charapovich passed away in a freak accident in her home, and like we've done many times before, Spanish Fork will band together, and wanted to give a shout out that this Friday, September 20th, there will be a, just a benefit for Brookie, a little get-together. Everyone is invited. They'll have Sherry Call, Brooklyn Spencer, Hillary Weeks, the band City Limits, and bake sales and a lot of that, and again, if it's one thing that our community's always done, it's banded around families that are in need, and so I would invite everybody to attend that. It's at 770 East and 920 South here in Spanish this Friday, September 20th, between 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., and our hearts go out to the Charapovich family for their loss, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. All right, Councilman Argal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to also do a shout out for the league. A lot of preparation, and thank those from the city that prepared that to get us up there and allow us to stay and go to those meetings. I always, I think we all learn a lot from those breakout sessions. We get an opportunity to hear from always the governor and some of the leaders of Utah and some of the things that are going on with all aspects of our state and the condition of our state, and it's always a good opportunity to learn and hear about some things that other communities are doing, especially because there's so many other communities represented there. Also, just to let you know that we have started, we've had three companies doing evaluation of our sewer plant. They've completed those evaluations and we're doing some reviews of those. They evaluated our sewer plant, the condition it in, and the future of our sewer plant, and we're just starting to review those and start looking at the information and the new technology and the things that we'll need to do to continue to grow with the city as the city grows. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, just a couple of things that I want to mention. I attended our MAG meeting last week, and MAG approved some money for Spanish Fork to purchase some property along the Center Street corridor for a future on-off ramp there down the road, and so we're acquisitively engaged in future opportunities down there. It might be a while, but at least we're making the steps to make that happen, and we're excited for that. Also, the groundbreaking for the fire station is October 2nd at noon. So we'd like to invite all the public that want to come up to the groundbreaking of our new fire station up on Canyon Road. We're pretty excited for that, and it's going to be a great event, and we're looking forward for that new station. Also, I'd like to mention, today, one of our citizens had a birthday, and you know, he was only 101 years old. What do you think of that, scouts? Are you going to live to be 101 years old?
Never know.
Tell you what, Mark McKell lived just down the street from me growing up, and there's Mark right there, and he used to be the postmaster here in Spanish Fork a long, long time ago, and I remember that, and he was in my ward growing up, and a great man, and still goes. Learned how to play the organ here the last few years, and so he's playing the organ, and so it's kind of cool to recognize one of our residents that reaches 101 years old, so congratulations to him and his family.
Doesn't that go against our ordinance for how many signs you can have in someone's yard?
Well, I gave him a special reprieve on that, so it worked out just fine.
Like candles on a birthday cake.
So as long as he takes them down in time for 102. So with that, let's move into Spanish Fork 101. Harvest Moon Hurrah, come on up, Emily.
I'm Emily Harriman. I am the special event supervisor in the Parks and Recreation Department, and I have left all of you one of our flyers on each of your areas to invite you to the Harvest Moon Hurrah, which is this Saturday from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. over at the city park across the street by the library. Ashley Hess, who is from this season's American Idol, is our main entertainment in the evening, so come see her. For the kids, we have a lot of fun parade events. We provide the children with the activity card where they can go to different areas and get marked off of the different things that they go to, such as face painting. We have the Utah Valley Spider-Man who will be teaching kids some special tricks. We're going to have, the chamber will be sponsoring, doing some pumpkins where kids can go over and get pumpkins and put faces on those, and again, everything is all free. We do have several food vendors and food trucks that will be there. Councilmember Mendenhall had mentioned the, I'm sorry, just forgot what it was called. Rotary, the Rotary will actually be there doing a fundraiser as well. They'll be selling cotton candy out there at the Harvest Moon Hurrah for low cost for their fundraiser. So we hope you guys, the council members and the community can come on Saturday.
Look forward to that, and thank you for all the work that you've put into that and everybody else.
Thank you.
So that'll be a great event, and expect everybody to show up and have a fun time. And if you want a pumpkin, come early, because they go fast. All right, consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, public hearing. Ordinance Z 11-19, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the IFA zone change. Who's going to lead out for us on that?
Send the chief to get them.
My gosh, chief?
So did you have that ordinance, Scott? You pull the map up.
Who is it? Is it that Dave? Brandon? Can anybody tell him what time this started?
Well, we can cover the first one, so we're proposing a zone change for the IFA property from I 2 to C 2. Planning department has talked with them.
Can we actually ask if this item B continues?
I don't know.
Did we?
We did reach out to representative of the property today, oh, he reached out to us and asked that the item B continued so that they could discuss it further with staff as far as implications that it may have on the current business that they're operating.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion to move that?
Let's continue this to a specific day, then we'll have to read all this.
Is the, is October the first?
So our next council meeting in October, is that, would that work?
I'll make that motion that we table this item until October. What day is that?
First. I'll second that.
Which is it? First?
I'm gonna second it for the first.
Okay, first, oh, you were seconding, sorry. I heard first and I heard second, and I go, well, which is it, first or second? Got a motion by Councilman Gordon and a second by Councilback. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance Z 12-19, changing zoning designation, amending the official zoning map of the Spanish Fork City for the Arrowhead Trail Zone Change.
Thank you. So this is in the same area, if we can just pan over to Del Monte. This corner piece here is zoned I 2, and so the city has looked at some portions along Arrowhead and Del Monte as a whole, and there's some concern as far as the I 2 remnants from a previous zoning configuration for the area and the potential that those uses might be impactful as we've seen residential and other uses grow and develop in the area, and so as, as we've kind of looked at the whole, this was an area that we singled out as far as maybe having some uses that might be less than desirable, especially on a high-traffic corner as it continues to grow. So staff did look at that with the DRC as well as the Planning Commission. The main thing that we focused on, the key issue, was the types of uses that are permitted in the I 2 and whether or not we felt it was appropriate as far as that location and the vision for the city as we grow. The general plan does reflect this corner as being mixed use, and so it does envision something more commercial, retail, office, even possibility of some residential. You're familiar with this property. We did have the storage units that were approved over a year ago. Their approval then expired. They then came before you and pleaded for the opportunity to have the site plan for the storage units re-approved, which has taken place, and so as a follow-up, in case their approval does expire again, the city would like to have this rezoned to rural residential, which would be kind of like a holding zone, so then at that point, the city can determine what might be the best use of the property and the best use on this visible piece. There are some findings that were provided as well as the recommendation. The Planning Commission did propose that it be rezoned to the RR zone.
All right, we'll go into public, and then we might have some questions for you. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in a public hearing. Anyone that would like to come up and talk about this zoning change, feel free to come on up, state your name. Seeing done, I would entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments on this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we approve ordinance Z 12-19, changing the zoning designation and amending the official zoning map of Spanish Fork City for the Arrowhead Trail Zone Change.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Beck. This is a roll call vote. Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Passes. Okay, proposed general plan amendment, amending and zone change for property located at approximately 1900 South State Road 198.
If you don't mind, Scott, if you can add the general plan designation layer on. That's all right. We do have a brief PowerPoint that was supplied to us from the applicant, I believe. We'll pull it up in just a second, and so the area that we're looking at, so what the applicant is requesting is both an amendment to our general plan land use designation as well as the zoning map. The area we're looking at, you'll see it in a moment on a PowerPoint slide, is generally here, and so currently you can see we've got an agricultural designation, a medium density, and then some commercial. What the applicant is looking for is slightly higher density residential, specifically R4, R3, R18, and R112, and those numbers are basically just tying to the proposed density that they've outlined on the plans. This proposal predates my hiring date here with Spanish Fork City, and so I'm probably preaching to the choir as far as rehashing things that took place over a year ago. Since this application has been made, the city has undertaken hiring consultant to look at the river bottoms as a whole and kind of look at some options and ideas as far as what might be appropriate in the river bottoms, and so what the applicant is looking for is on the property that's outlined on the staff report. They are looking to amend that so they can develop some residential product at a higher density than we currently call out for in both the general plan as well as the zone map, and so one of the key issues is those changes to the general plan, but then also taking into consideration the findings that are coming to light as far as the river bottom study. One of the key components that we heard from those involved is a desire to keep the river bottoms open, maybe free from development, or if development does occur at a lower density. And the last component to take into consideration is the flood plain. There's a reason that the river bottoms is open, well, there's many reasons why it's still open today, but one of those is the fact that a majority of it is within the 100-year and 500-year flood plain, and so the idea of if development occurs in the flood plain, we should also consider what type of development and how that might impact the flood plain or vice versa. This one did go before the Planning Commission on September 4th. We did hear some comments regarding the application. The findings there listed in the staff report were presented to you as a recommendation from the Planning Commission that the proposed changes to the general plan and the zone change be denied based on the finding that it does not conform to the river bottoms' vision, and then the second, the concern that it would potentially allow for this type of development in the flood plain. And as I stated at the beginning, we do have an applicant here, excited to speak to you as well as present some information that we provided to Scott.
So should we do that, let them present that, and then go into a public hearing? Okay, so if those guys have the PowerPoint, let them come up, state your name, and we'll listen to what you have.
Thank you. My name's Aaron Robertson with Blue Ox Development. We've talked and seen you guys on various occasions over the past couple of years since we put in this application back in the spring of 2017. And first off, you know, to be candid, we're grateful for some of the work that your staff has put forth in the effort that this council and others have put forth in at least entertaining some of the thoughts and ideas that we have. Our push for this is pretty simple. We've been waiting a long time. There's no end in sight from our perspective, and we're just trying to get some definitive answers for our investors based on our fiduciary responsibility we have on this project. And simply put... On the side? Okay, whoops, that's the battery. Got it. Let's see if, do I have to point it anywhere? All right. So we have, in this petition, we have three landowners. Spanish Fork City, you've got this, this is your wetlands area that you have down, you created. There's quite a bit of history that ties to that, and when that was created, there was a contract negotiated with our predecessor that envisioned some level of development taking place and potential density bonuses that we create with that. We own the 11 acres concurrently adjacent to that space. At the time of the application, we had under contract the balance of this property with the Halverson family. We no longer have that property under contract. However, the Halverson family is, has requested that we continue to leave them as part of the application because they would like to see this continue to change as we've recommended. So, again, this has been sitting there a long time. There's been thoughts and ideas of what it could and should look like. You talked, your planner mentioned your general plan. Most of this ground sits as agriculture in your master plan. The portion that's owned by Blue Ox Development was master planned or currently master planned as medium-density residential, and so because of the agricultural nature of what we have, our proposal would change more on the Halverson's property than ours is a big deviation from that. Gail Halverson would argue that, as was stated earlier tonight, that his ground was put in agriculture as, quote, "a holding zone," just as you, your planner discussed, putting this other property in residential earlier as a holding zone. That was the intent, as he understood it, when he annexed into the city. The property that we own, that was annexed long before our involvement, based on its proximity to your main arterial road, the highway there, it was anticipated that you would have some density in that location, and so that's what we've proposed, consistent with your general plan. Our plan, we've had various presentations and had various conversations about what this could and should look like, but ultimately, we are trying to push density closer to main arterial roads, develop most of this area, but do so such that there's open space and parks integrated into what we're doing. In point of fact, our design that was done by Northland Design has won awards in this state and nationally for good design. We were not thoughtless in our efforts in how we put this together. We have tried to participate in your process in looking at the vision of the river bottoms, the vision that's starting to emerge. We've been uncomfortable and frustrated with the process, but, and more frustrated with the vision that we see coming together as it's largely just more agricultural. In a town that's looking to add, you know, 50,000 people in the next 30 years, more agriculture didn't seem to communicate with that. There's been concerns raised of your wetlands, there's been concerns, and that is a real concern. There's been the idea of flood plain, that is a real concern. Our argument is that everything that we are trying to do is conforming with good engineering practices. We can mitigate the flood plain, the flood plain is a 100-year flood plain here. The floodplain is 100-year floodplain here, is, I mean, there's been development in that within Spanish Fork in the past. It's federally stated what you have to do to pull out of that floodplain, and our design has contemplated, and our, our budgets have contemplated doing those things needed to pull this out of the floodplain and, and develop in a safe and effective manner. Consistent with what's taken in the class, or what's taken in the past, we recognize that there are many in the community that would like to see this stay agricultural. As a man who grew up in rural Cody, Wyoming, on a farm, I get that. I like looking out the door and seeing farm ground. I've spent most of my life living in a rural setting. So while I'm sensitive to that, the flip side is this ground has been annexed into the city of Spanish Fork. It was done so with the anticipation that it would not remain agricultural, but would be developed in some nature, in some fashion. And based on our analysis of the site, the needs of Spanish Fork City, the housing needs of Spanish Fork City, this is what we're proposing. We're looking for these particular zones which would be conforming zones based on the densities that we proposed in those various areas. This would not be something that is, you know, in most communities would be considered high density or heavily developed, based on the park systems that we would be putting in place, the trail systems we put in place. It'd be very different than that. We recognize that this body can deny us or push us back down for more work with staff and Planning Commission. We're willing to accept whatever decision is made. We feel that we have lots to offer, and we could go through a lot of detail on why we've put together what we've put together. We've chosen not to present all that tonight and take that in bite-sized chunks if there's an interest in the future. Any questions on any of this?
You talk about the floodplains.
Yes.
As you talk about it, you want it to go away?
Not that we want it to go away. And in point of fact, there's portions of our property, and, and we have under contract other property that currently is not annexed into the city of, of Spanish Fork. And there's portions of this property that we would consider undevelopable because it sits in, you know, the 50-year floodplain or, or has a higher propensity of flooding. But where most of, nearly all of the, south of the river in this area sits in the 100-year floodplain, it's not that we want to make it, quote, "go away," but we would do one of two mitigation techniques to reduce and eliminate the risk of flooding in this area. The one that's primarily considered is simply just raising the ground outside of the floodzone. The, the idea that there's, that there's not enough space or channeling for the water to get through, we believe that we can show that there is, should that be allowed.
And the wetlands that's there?
Wetlands is yours. We're not touching it.
Stay.
That would stay. In point of fact, it also sits in this floodplain. We could help you mitigate that while we develop our ground, because we'd have the ability to do that through roads and other things and creating a barrier so that the river is not contaminating in a flood, what would be considered your drinking water, because that's the purpose of those wetlands right there. There, there are some other commitments that need to be addressed regarding that wetlands, but this isn't really the place to discuss those or the time at this moment.
Hey, we might have some more questions for you after the public hearing.
Okay.
So let's have the public hearing, and then we might call you back up afterwards. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in public hearing. Anyone that'd like to come and discuss, talk about this issue, please come up. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion to go out of public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comments, discussions?
I had a question, maybe Brandon or Junior. Chairman Tanner was concerned with the suggestions that the city has overstepped and does not feel that he or the commissioner are prepared to act with the Planning Commission. Can you elaborate on what that maybe was during the Planning Commission? Just in the notes here.
Chairman Tanner was concerned with the suggestions that the city has overstepped and does not feel that he or the commissioner are prepared to act.
I watched that meeting today. There were some comments and even some accusations that were levied by one of the prior landowners concerning the contractual relationship between the city and him. I'm guessing it was in relationship to that. I don't know, I, I don't, I didn't get to that point in the meeting to hear him say that, but I'm guessing it was in relation to the, the purchase contract where we purchased that seven acres of wetlands.
I'll make a comment. I know, I met, I was one that met with you, Brandon and I, two years ago, and there are several ideas I really like about this community. I think I'm just not ready to make any decision tonight until we go over and approve the official river bottoms vision, which from what I understand will be in the next month or so. So I would just suggest maybe hold off, but that's, that's my opinion. Until we get that approved, it just is going to be coming to us in, in another month, and then we will know where we all stand, because what I think is going to happen might be different than what Councilman Mendenhall or Argyle thinks, so I just would like to hold off another month or two, but.
Do, do we have an idea when that's gonna?
So we do have, if you go online on the city website, we do have the draft, and what we're finalizing right now is, is potentially the TDR program. So one thing that was identified was if we preserve the river bottoms as open green space that can be continued to be farmed and in agricultural production, how do we address the development opportunities that may or may not have existed on some of the properties in the river bottom? And so my understanding is that the text that's in the draft document here isn't necessarily under scrutiny or, or subject to change. It's the program itself as far as valuing how many units are assigned to each property, what the development potential of property might be, whether it's in the floodplain or out of the floodplain, and how do we disperse those? Do they go to the sides of the river bottoms, or do they go throughout the community to kind of keep as much development potential as we can? So my understanding is that we are in the process of, of finally, finalizing the TDR program, and so I can definitely touch bases with Dave on that. He's actually at Utah County tonight presenting to them an update as far as our progress on the river bottoms vision plan, and we can definitely get answers back to you as far as the timeline.
This, this 100 acres was in, is, I know it's in the river bottom, it's not included, but it, it is in the city limits. It's annexed into the city limits. Was that, that was considered as the river, part of the river bottoms?
Yes.
Vision? Thanks, Brandon. Any other questions or comments?
Just following up on that, I think to Councilwoman Beck's comments, the river bottoms draft, as you have seen it, the public is, is reviewing it right now, and, and we'll have some public hearings in the next Planning Commission and City Council meetings, contemplate that there will be some, one of a couple of options. Obviously, one option is let it develop like all the rest of the city, and that's not something that has been proposed in these, in the vision statement. But another one is to leave it all open, and another, another option is to have some, some balance of some development, some open space as well. And, and this TDR program really is a big, it's an important part of it. One of the options shows this area that is being proposed by the applicant today as potentially a receiving zone for some of those TDRs. By that, I mean, it, it could receive greater density because some of the areas that would be left without development, the, the development rights from that ground, the farmer that owns it today could sell one unit, two units, 10 units, depending on whatever the, the calculations are, to this developer, and they could go up in their density. Or this area could also be a sending zone, and they could send their development rights to another area of the community. That's been a very important part of the discussions that we have had, because as, as landowners, we don't want them to simply lose any development possibility because of the location of the property near a floodplain. As a community, I think one of the challenges we face, this year's a great year, where we have had high floodwaters through the, the spring melt. The waters were high, what was it, about two months? And thankfully, they were high for about two months because it wasn't super high for only a weekend or two, which would have caused flooding for sure this year. We also had two rain events in July, the end of July and the first of August, that increased the water level in the, the river such that at one point was one and a half feet away from flood stage. And that went up in a matter of hours and was elevated for about 36 hours in, in total. And so the, the floodplain is a, is a serious consideration and one that I think the staff is, as we've gone through this process, one that we should not overlook. And we have homes that back onto the river today. I had a conversation with one of those homeowners two Saturdays ago, and I asked them how they were liking the end of summer, and they said, you know, one of the biggest frustrations for us this year is we've had to put our backyard together, back together three times. And knowing where they live, I said, I am so sorry. I kind of had a smile on my face like Councilwoman Beck has right there because, and they read that, and they said, we know, our house is next to the river. And I said, you probably need to plan for that every year, don't you? And they said, yeah, we do. We just didn't want to do it three times. And I, my heart went out to them. But the proximity to the river is a big deal, and one that, that as staff we feel needs to be given extra caution. As they mentioned, they can take it out of the floodplain by elevating it two feet above the base flood elevation, and that may be a good option, but it still puts a lot of private property in harm's way. And as a community, that seems to be something that we end up being involved in, fighting that river back, or they end up, as landowners, having greater flood insurance costs and things like that. And so this TDR program that is being researched and that this study contemplates putting into place for the river bottoms seems to provide a medium, or rather, a happy balance. And they may have some contrary thoughts that they'd like to share, but that's something I think needs to be given the merit, and, and I share some of the thoughts you had, Councilwoman Beck, of the time seems just slightly premature as we're trying to consider the overall goal of, of that river bottom vision.
Would, would the, the, I know that's up farther on the bench, but there's a commercial piece of property that's in that corner. Is that, that, is that included in there, or will that, will we leave that as commercial?
It's, go to the zone as it stands today. It's in, it's functioning today.
As a commercial?
Yeah, I mean, that's what you're, you have like a, it used to be maybe an automotive, auto dealer kind of a place. I think there's an outhouse and, and storage facility that's there. That, that commercial zone is somewhat functioning today. And we haven't proposed changing that through the vision process either.
I, I'd just like, I'm gonna second with Stacy. I think we're, if we're that close to hearing from them, I'd, I'd like to see that before I start considering some of this. I would also, I am not a fan of R4 and R3 in the river bottoms. I'm, I'm not. I wouldn't be anyway, but I would still like to see that proposal, because we've waited a long time for that, and now it's getting close. So I may be putting that off. Any other comments?
Mine really quick, I'd be remiss if the son of a river commissioner, the grandson of a river commissioner, and the great-great-grandson of a river commissioner didn't speak about the river. I might get disowned out of the will or something if you don't speak about the river. But what I have learned about the river, and I appreciate Seth's detail in it, but it took me a while into my teen years before I realized that, that river and control of it isn't always often, in fact, it's not the event that's here in Spanish Fork. And I always thought that as a, as a kid growing up here, that, oh, if we get a big storm moving through here, obviously things are going to happen, and, and it's going to put some stress on some systems, but the drainage that, that our river takes up the canyon, and not just up the canyon, but way up the canyon, only has so many control aspects to it. And that's what we saw happen earlier this year. It wasn't necessarily the event that happened inside our city limits, but it was far away from our city limits. And again, there's only a couple of, couple of dams that, that you can try to control that. You can only control it for so long before they're overtaken. And, and so the concern of the floodplain down here really is an issue to me because as residents, you're thinking, well, it's, yeah, it's raining hard, but it's not, you know, it's not overbearing, but really up in the canyon where those washes are and come into, into this river, I've seen it firsthand up there where it is some scary situations and, and simply overpower the man-made projects that, that hold up well, relatively well, until you get, until you get something that you can't control. So I appreciate what's been said about the vision. I think that's a long time coming of a document, and I'm, I'm excited to see that come to fruition and us be able to study it, work on it, and say, okay, how does the, how does the river bottoms look for the next X amount of decades for our residents, for the landowners, and for everybody that has a stake in it? So I'd agree with what's, what's been said as well. That's all I have there.
Anyone else? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I move we deny the proposed general plan amendment and zone change for property located approximately 1900 South State Road 198.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. We don't have roll call on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. I think the direction is clear. We'll, we'll see what happens with our study from the river bottoms, and then we'll move from there. Okay. Ordinance 22-19, making assorted amendment to Title 15. I hope Dave relayed what I said to him about this.
I apologize, he has not. I will do my best to answer any questions you have. Dave was kind enough to provide a cover sheet that kind of outlines why some of these changes are brought before you. He's probably over my shoulder. Nope, he's not. And so what we're mainly trying to do is clarify some of the processes as well as the requirements that are found in city code. Some of these were brought to us by the building official, some by engineering, some by planning. And the intent is hopefully that we can clarify so that as applicants or citizens look at the requirements in city code, it's very clear as far as what the expectations are. And so without going through all of them, or I can if you'd like, if there's any specific questions you've got, I'd be more than happy to turn to those and look at them. Hopefully, the memo that was provided was very clear as far as what was being stricken and what was being replaced or added to the code.
You did well.
Thank you.
But Seth will do more.
No, but somebody asked about when that vision should be here. It should be at your council meeting, the second council meeting in October, which I think means that it'll be reviewed by the Planning Commission at their October meeting as well, which is their next council meeting.
Second of October, it said on the.
So yeah, they meet on the second of October, and then we'd be at your second council meeting in October, which I think.
We meet on the first.
Can we first that, or is that the second?
It's the third.
Stacy's.
So I think that's the 15th.
All right. Any, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Member Beck, a second by Councilman Argyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're now in a public hearing. Anyone that would like to talk about these ordinance change, feel free to come up. Come on up, state your name.
Yes, I'm Josh Galvez, resident in Spanish Fork. And just, one of the proposed ordinance changes was to authorize a 24-month time period for the expiration of a building plan. Just had some concerns or questions about the length of that time and why that particular amendment was being made.
Want to address, well, do you have any other questions?
That's all I had.
Okay, so we'll hold that question, be thinking about that. We'll have Brandon answer that. Is anyone else like to talk, discuss this? Is anyone else like to talk, discuss this? Seeing none, I'd go out of, make a motion, go out of public hearing. Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Brandon, would you like to address that?
General plan text or map amendment expires.
Yeah, I think the idea behind that is to not allow things to remain in perpetuity and so let them advance. Oh, we, yeah, we can, can we scroll to the section in?
Section fifteen dot two oh four.
Item B, under application.
So, it's on page four? The top of page four? I apologize, it's a little washed out on the screen here. The green is what's proposed to be added, so currently, as you can see, there's no red or strike through text. And so, what we did is we went through all of the different types of applications that the city has. Few of them, we did not have expiration dates tied to them. And so, the idea here is that if we get an application to amend the general plan or the map, that we would move that through the review process, make a decision instead of it sitting and basically be an open, unexpired application that may then resurface, you know, years from now. So, the hope is that we'd act on it accordingly and, and timely.
You're not changing an expiration date, you're creating one with twenty-four months.
Does that answer your question?
I feel like two years is a long time for that.
Okay.
So, the Republican here, he said he feels like that's too long. I think we agree in, in many respects that what we actually just went through is specifically one of these issues where there was an application a little more than two years ago, but there was no expiration for it. And so, that application is sitting there pending while we're going through the river bottoms process. This would actually create a, I guess it would be kind of deemed denied after that twenty-four month period. One thing we do run in with, not just general plans, but Platts and other things, development actually takes a long time. Somebody's in a process for a general plan amendment, then a maybe a subdivision plat, preliminary, and then final, et cetera. That process usually does take anywhere from a year to two years. And so, we felt like a two-year timeframe, although it is a little bit longer than you might think, a year is too short because it, there is a lot of study that can go into these general plan changes. And so, we don't want things to prematurely time out, but two years definitely, if there is nothing going after two years, then there is probably nothing gonna happen, if you will. So, that is, that, maybe there's a little bit more of an explanation why that twenty-four month period, maybe a little bit of a Goldilocks thing. A year's too short, forever is too long. So, two, I don't, anyways.
Nice try at Goldilocks, you know? Come back next time. All right. Any questions, comments from the council? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two nineteen, making assorted amendments to Title fifteen.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Beck, a second by Councilman Scopes. This is a roll call vote. Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, moving to new business, salary adjustment.
Kim, if I could get you to join me up here. Kim Hall's been a big part of the compensation update this year, so I don't wanna leave her out of this. Appreciate all the help that Kim has been this year.
Only fifteen million people are gonna watch ya.
For those of you that don't know Kim, Kim is our human resource director and she has been in that position now for six months? Has it been six months? So, she is still on probation, according to our policy. So, that's another reason I wanted to bring her up here. No, teasing. So, Kim and I completed the annual compensation study. The way this works, we had a, in our work session prior to council meeting, we went to quite a bit of detail on how we come up with these numbers. I wanna make sure that the public understands how we come up with these numbers as well. I'll try and keep it to the Reader's Digest version, though, Mayor. So, what we do is we have fifteen cities that are of comparable size or comparable makeup that have similar jobs that we have here at Spanish Fork. And we, we have a database where they enter all of their salary ranges for each of their positions and we do the same for ours. And then annually, as those are updated, we pull those numbers and we take the average of their midpoints, because the ranges for other cities may be different than ours. Ours ranges from the midpoint at a hundred percent, it ranges from eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent. And that midpoint is, is at that hundred percent range. To, to try to recruit and retain employees, we'll then take that average of the, the other cities' midpoints and we'll bump that up to the sixtieth percentile. And, and we've, before you are the numbers from this year. If you wanna know what those fifteen comp cities are, I'm happy to share, share those with you as well. But, it, I guess, the, the main thing is, on this, that we wanted to show you from, from this year's results are that the ranges on average went up almost two percent. You can see in the bottom right corner there, they went up about one point nine eight percent. So, each of these different pay grades includes several different positions. So, we, we make sure and evaluate internal equity as well as, as the market when we're placing a, a job into these pay grades. We've had this philosophy in place now for about four years and the results have, have honestly been amazing when it comes to recruiting and retention. Our turnover rate over the last year was one point three six percent. So, compared to other, other cities and even the public sector, that's pretty astounding.
But, can you explain that number just a little better? Like, what does that mean?
Yeah, so, we have two hundred and twenty benefited employees. And of those two hundred and twenty benefited employees, we had three employees last year that left the city for employment somewhere else. We didn't include the retirees, so if there was a retiree, we didn't include that in that number. But, that would, that would be a person that felt like maybe the grass was greener somewhere else, or maybe their family needed a change or other, for other reasons, they left employment with Spanish Fork City to go work somewhere else. So, that's, with that, here are the, here are the numbers. Any, any questions on any of those? There's also included in, in the, the agenda are the pay grades by position, which the public has access to as well. And Scott, if you wanna pull those up, just so they can kinda see that that's there, the pay grades by position. But that's all I have. Any, any questions on, anything you wanna say, Kim?
Come on, Kim, say something. Come on, you can do it.
No, I don't want you to say anything.
Sorry, Kim, I didn't mean to embarrass, Kim doesn't get embarrassed very easily.
Way to go. Thank you. All right. Any, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve, approve the twenty-nineteen salary adjustments.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scopes, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen, amending food vendor licenses.
A few years back, we created a food vendor ordinance in compliance with the state law and to address all the food trucks that are becoming so popular. One of the things we did is we banned them during our Fiesta Days celebration. What we've come to realize is there are some areas of the city during that time that it'd be nice to have a food truck. We've also realized there's some other events that happen that, that they shouldn't be competing with, with those events. The Utah County Fair being a, a prime example. So, this ordinance makes a couple of corrections in that. And what it does is it says that you can't have a food vendor license during these certain events if you're within two hundred feet of a perimeter of one of these events. So, if, we talked about the Fiesta Days and the, and the rodeo, so the fairgrounds area, you can't be within two thousand feet of that perimeter and qualify for a food vendor license. But if you're, you know, down somewhere else in the city, then you can get one. The other thing we've done is, we know there's a few celebrations, the Fiesta Days, the County Fair, but there's other events too. So, we wanted to be generic enough and broad enough to, to cover those. So, we talked about, we gotta change the color so people can, not trying to read that green that's.
Tell them not to ever use green.
Can't read. So, we've identified them as major athletic events, city events, and chamber of commerce events. Then, the city manager by the ordinance is delegated with the authority to determine that, or his designee. And we anticipate that those will be delegated to either Dave Anderson, who's our community development director, or to Dell Robinson, who is our parks and recreation director. But we think this solves some of the problems we've seen, increases some benefits, increases opportunities for the food vendor trucks. Questions?
I think this is good, saying chamber of commerce events and city events kinda helps us have some discretionary, like the farmer's market, for example. Let them think of other things like that. So, I appreciate that work.
You know, as we expand the fairgrounds, we may have some other major events and we don't want food truck vendors competing with people who are paying to, to be a vendor at that event.
Yep. But if it's too big of an event and I gotta park more than two thousand feet away, maybe I need my hot dog on the way to walk to get to the event.
Maybe we need better parking. This allows that to happen.
Perfect. Solves my problem.
There you go. All right, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash nineteen, amending food vendor licenses.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Argal. Roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
That passes. Resolution nineteen dash twenty, authorizing city manager to execute master professional service agreements.
So, through the years, we have observed things that are just a standard form contract. And rather than bring all of those mundane type things to the council for approval every time, we've, we've authorized department directors to execute those. What we've observed here recently is, it seems like it's the engineering department that's always bringing a master professional service agreement to the city. And then we have work orders that implement things there. Those master agreements are all the same, it's basically fill in the blank. So, we're proposing that, rather than bring each of those to you, that we authorize a city manager to execute those. And, and the work orders, as we actually do any work, will, will come to you, but, but the master agreements won't.
All right.
Could you give us an example of that?
So, we've authorized, for instance, the fairgrounds manager to execute leases for the stalls. We've authorized the airport manager to execute airport, hang, the hangar leases. We've authorized John Bulkhead, as the director of IT services, to execute the standard television contracts because they're pretty much at his even, you know, what the owner's deadline. So, I don't know, there's a half dozen or so of those type of things. All of them are based on basically a form agreement.
Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion if there's no other questions.
In my motion, I appreciate the seamless working this and making government a little bit more efficient in this type of atmosphere, because being involved in prior things with the airport, that was a big change to get that taken care of by the airport manager rather than waiting for, I know it would be just one council meeting now or soon, but it was two council meetings before, which put off people and big projects getting stuff done out of, out of the airport. So, I appreciate us being more efficient in this, in this form right here. With that, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution nineteen twenty, authorizing city manager to execute master professional service agreements.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Mendenhall, a second by Councilmember Beck. This'll be a roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scopes.
Aye.
Councilman Argal.
Aye.
Councilmember Beck.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
That passes. Proposal to include a swimming pool as a private amenity in the legacy farm development and welcome back, Dave.
Welcome back, Dave. Great to be here, thank you.
Duck all the hard stuff.
I understand I have some time to make up, so you don't mind if I be really deliberate talking through this?
Nope. Brandon did a fine job holding it down.
As I would expect, thank you.
Is that why we're moving so fast tonight?
Yes.
Seven oh five.
Another five minutes and we could've been out of here.
We just wanna know if you're comfortable with this or not. That's really what it boils down to. The Development Review Committee discussed this proposal that I'll describe in a second. And I think we had some different points of view about it, what it might mean for the development and for the process and for legacy farms as an approved project. And we concluded collectively that it'd be wise to get the Planning Commission City Council's input. So, we're here tonight just to get your thoughts on the idea of allowing Fieldstone to add a swimming pool and a small park to their development. In order for them to accomplish this, they will not lose or would not lose any home sites. They wouldn't lose any residential lots, but they would reconfigure a row of lots, maybe Mr. Alet, if you can scroll down. So, in order to accomplish this, to put a pool and playground right here on a corner, all of these lots in this row would be adjusted. Some would lose as much as five feet of lot width, some would be considerably less than that. And that's how they would create the space to put the pool in the development without losing any lots. They still have a number of lots that would be wide enough to have homes with three-car garages on them. And all of the lots, I think one way to describe it still would meet one of the upper tiers of lot width for the legacy farms development. The design standards that come into play architecturally are based somewhat on lot width. And these lots would still fall in that upper tier for lot size. So, the design of the homes wouldn't necessarily change. If you can, and let me mention this just while we have this and then Scott'll ask you to, to maybe go to another image, but seventy-two, this pool then, as proposed, would be an amenity for part of the legacy farms development. Seventy-two homes would belong to a specific homeowners association that would pay for the maintenance and operation of the pool, they'd be responsible for it. And, best as I understand, then they'd be the ones that would have access to it. So, that's a little bit different. I think, I think that's something that took us as staff maybe a little while to get our heads around, just how this would maybe be, you know, limited relative to those in legacy farms that might be able to utilize it. In terms of what's really being proposed, this is another image. I think the space that we're talking about is seven or eight thousand square feet. It's not a large area, it's akin to the size of, you know, a fairly typical lot in the legacy farms project. Again, swimming pool, I think there's a little playground space over here on a corner, a pretty, pretty visible location. And I don't think staff's really coming with a particular recommendation or bias here. The, the Planning Commission, they talked about this in their last meeting and they felt comfortable with having the pool be a part of the project. I don't know if you have any other images there, we might not, yeah, just a little bit more of the same, just different perspectives. But before we work with Fieldstone to move forward, or before we tell them no, I guess we're looking for that direction from you.
Okay. Any comments on this?
What, what area of their subdivision, Dave? Is it on the northwest side of Slant Road, or is it a development that they have option to do on the south side of Slant Road?
This is not far from the railroad tracks on the southeast side of the development.
Okay.
Yeah, this might help. And we're, we're talking about.
But you shouldn't have your eyes down on city.
Area, it's.
Wanna do the math on how.
He sounds like my dentist. Whoop.
Yeah, so, we're talking about this area over here, right?
Oh, that far down?
I might speculate even that, that the pool is gonna be just off of this road, so maybe someplace over in here.
Comparable to the, if you go across the railroad tracks to the east there, a, uh, Mapleton development that looks like it has the same.
D.R. Horton.
Kind of concept.
Kind of concept right there.
And we have that up at, uh, Spanish Oaks, they have a swimming pool up there in their HO, up by the golf course, so, um, personally, I think it's fine, you know, I think it's one way that they can attract people to buy lots and they pay for it.
I think I've clearly the motive.
I like it.
So you just need to, yes.
There are no objections, that's the message, I'll give Fieldstone.
Nobody objects? Okay, you got that? Okay.
Any discussion items?
Any discussion items? Thank you.
I move we go into closed session for reasonably imminent litigation, land transaction, and to discuss the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilmember Beck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for everyone that was here that laughed when Junior got up to speak. So we're now closed.